I get the picture somewhere and we threw that page me in. And Kevin Martin, because the lady from, uh, lady from her company said it was her so good, I see across the room. And then she goes, uh, she goes, and she goes, "That's not right."
Okay, that's the only way. The answer is yes. So we're gonna, we're gonna, it's real estate, city property.
I don't know, it doesn't have that on it.
No, really?
This is the Shelby.
We're gonna have to use their name.
This is just the things that you're seeing.
Okay, it is 7:00 PM and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Uh, may we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Beckmeyer, Councilmember O'Neil, Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Martin.
Here.
Mayor Vaderlaus.
Here. We are going to salute the flag and it will be led by Deirdre Martin.
Our flag is to the two sides of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any closed session report?
No reportable action.
Thank you. Um, we're moving on to the consent calendar. I am in an awkward.
They move that we pass the consent calendar?
A second.
You have any cards?
No, I don't have any cards. Okay, please vote. And that passes five to nothing. On to oral communications and for oral communications, I have one card. Janine Menger.
Is this one you make public comment?
Yes, public comment. That's a better name for it, too. I'm gonna change it.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Janine Menger. I live here in Pacifica on Edgemar Avenue. I'm a Commissioner on the LGBTQ Commission of the County of San Mateo. My goal here this evening is to get invited back to do a 15-minute presentation of a more detailed survey, uh, summary of the LGBTQ Wellness Survey results that we recently finished doing. We recently completed the survey concentrating on LGBTQ adults and youth. We also have begun the current outreach phase of the survey program, thus my being here this evening. We would like to come back and give the full 15-minute presentation at some point in the future. I've, I've given Sarah the 43-page handout of the full results, but I guess you all also got emailed a link by, probably by Tanya Beat, who is our Administrator of our Commission. She works underneath Dave Pine, Commissioner, so. Uh, we'll be making policy recommendations to the County Board based on some of the survey findings and on our community outreach feedback. We had our first outreach meeting last week in East Palo Alto at, um, College Prep, I think it's called. And, um, Thursday, April 4th, 4th, we have our next, uh, oh, no, May 7th at Half Moon Bay. So last week, April 4th, we did it in Palo Alto. Half Moon Bay is next. Um, so since my time is limited, I'll just give you very quick things from the survey. LGBTQ people want to be safe, to be welcomed and included, to have access to resources and services, and to be visible. Um, 70, did you know that 77% of LGBTQ, LGBTQ youth have considered harming themselves in the last year? That's one of the things that came out of our survey results. It's a very alarming number, very high number. And I can say for personal experience also, the numbers on transgender people wanting to end their lives is very, very high. This is a very personal issue with me, I'll say that. It's a difficult topic to live with most of your life, all your life, I would say. Um, the survey is, is important because it was anecdotal before and now it's quantified statistics. We can act on objective data, we can measure how things have changed over time, and this makes what we as a community think and feel visible and measurable and actionable. This is a good start, and please expect more in the future. So again, we'd love to get invited back to do the full 15-minute presentation. Craig, or myself, or Chris, or any of the Commissioners might want to come and do that for you. So I'd love to hear from you again. Thank you so much.
Therese Dyer.
At the last City Council meeting, I wanted to discuss some more issues, but my two minutes were up. So the next day, I called the City Manager's Secretary to make an appointment and I was told that he was out for the rest of the week. I asked if it was business or personal and I was told it was none of my business. So I told her to have him call me the following week. He never did. So I attempted to make an appointment again and she wanted to know what it was about and I told her it was none of her business. But the, the building is not handicapped accessible, so we need to make appointment in advance so he can meet me either at the Planning Commission or whatever designated place, okay? So I would like to have a complaint form sent to me unless tonight's comments can assure me that it, it will go as my complaint. Uh, so, uh, when I spoke about the secondhand smoke and gave him some suggestions as to use the attorneys in San Mateo County, because, you know, the school district uses them, and you know that, Mike, um, and they, they looked at me and laughed. Well, I don't think it's funny and it's not very professional. And, I mean, you know, if you have a private meeting with you, I can clue you in on the City Attorney, you know, when I was on the grand jury, so we can have a few discussions there. But I don't think it's very good professional representation of our city. I mean, even if you went to Stanford, okay. Now, I'm gonna go to the County Supervisors Meeting tomorrow. I don't expect any of you there because no one ever shows up. So if you'd like to, to give me a message, I will convey it to them. But I gotta get up early, so I'm gonna leave. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no more yellow cards. If anyone else from the audience would like to speak, seeing none, I will move on to Council Communications. Who wants to start? Deirdre.
Okay. Uh, so, I attended the Aloney Lunch that was at the Pacifica Historical Society and it was amazing. The, um, the lunch was all native, um, was all native food, cuisine of native Aloney. And, um, I'm gonna tell a funny personal story here, is my husband's in the Navy and he has a weigh-in and he was supposed to come with me and it was like a couple days later and he said, "Well, I'm not gonna be able to eat anything anyway." Well, when I got there and I looked at what the food was, it was berries and nuts and all these things that he absolutely could have eaten and not, you know, I mean, the people were fit, you know, uh, back then. So it was really neat and interesting and they had chia pudding and, um, beet, sort of brownie-type things and venison. Uh, anyway, it was really neat and I thought it was such a great way to kick off and celebrate our history here. Um, and also, in case you didn't know, there is a, um, an Aloney Cafe in Berkeley. So you can go there and eat Aloney cuisine. Um, it's only open a couple days a week, because I think they do sort of events like this. And I just thought that was so interesting, so we're gonna plan on definitely going over there and checking it out. Um, so thank you to those who put that on. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, give a reminder to everyone about Earth Day coming up on, um, Saturday, uh, April 27th. Uh, the action will, will begin at 9:00 AM, so if you haven't signed up for your spot, uh, you can do so online, PacificBeachCoalition.org. And, um, if you have a spot you'd like to adopt, let us know and we'll get volunteers out there. Uh, and I always have space at my, uh, site to, for volunteers, if anybody's looking to volunteer. Uh, the Eco Fest begins at around 11, 11:30 and it'll go to 2, 2:30. It's in the main lot this year of Lindemar Parking Lot. And, uh, it should be an awesome time, so mark your calendars. They'll be parking over at Cabrillo School and you can, you can get a shuttle over. Uh, I attended the Progress Seminar this weekend that was put on by Redwood City Chamber of Commerce in Monterey with all of my, uh, fellow Councilmembers. It was, um, interesting. I will let, I will let one of them expand on the actual seminar itself. I, um, uh, one of the key takeaways was, uh, about transit and Sam Trans was there and, um, really just, uh, needing to come together and work together as a county and recognizing that, um, remedies in one area always help another. Um, all the other, all the other breakouts were sort of just okay for me. Um, so if anyone else wants to expand on that, feel free to. Uh, and then the last thing I want to say is that I sit on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board and, um, last meeting was a pretty hearty meeting. A couple of the takeaways, um, was the promotion of REACH codes and, um, this is as it relates to, um, adopting new building codes to help us promote our sustainability and, uh, reach our, uh, climate action plan goals of reducing our greenhouse gases. Uh, there was, um, a couple meetings and our building officer went, uh, and they learned a little bit more about new building electrification and electric vehicle infrastructure codes in 2020 building codes. So this was, I think I just said this, but one of my, um, wow, thanks. This was one of, um, one of the goals that we had, uh, listed for, um, 1920 and, um, planning's on it, so we're looking forward to seeing some of those, uh, come up. Uh, it's gonna have to happen probably pretty soon, uh, if we're gonna be, uh, you know, working on, on our, on our goals. REACH codes, it means reaching for what is attainable, so let's reach as far as we can to help hit our sustainability goals. Um, the other thing was, um, so, uh, Peninsula Clean Energy is in the business of clean energy, but in order to get people's buy-in, uh, they put a lot of money into, um, education and outreach and advocacy. And one of the things that they've been working on is electric vehicles. They did a ride and drive program last year and then, so you go out, you could ride, you could drive and get excited about it, and then you could go to a certain dealership and get a discount on your electric vehicle. Um, so this, you, next year, they're focusing on that as well. One of the, um, things that they're focusing on is, uh, access to vehicle charging stations. So, um, a lot of people who live in multi-unit dwellings don't have access because, um, they're, you know, they, they're older buildings. And, um, so they're, they're gonna do this pilot, um, which is called, they call it MUD, uh, MUD, Low Power, Multi-Unit Dwelling, MUD, Low Power Electric Vehicle Charging Pilot. And so it's gonna be over the next three years, so they're bringing in, um, a consultant to, you know, basically study, uh, the pilot, uh, study and implement a pilot, where the best places for these will be and how we can work with, um, multi-unit dwelling housing, uh, owners to, to help bring things up to code so we can start getting more stations. Um, just a, a point of reference, uh, electric vehicle sales grew 96% from year 2017 to 2018. Um, we don't expect to see that big of a jump from 18 to 19 because they think there was a big Tesla push, um, in 18, but that's huge, 96%. And, um, uh, I just wanted to throw that number out at you. Uh, so the, um, the, uh, the charging stations are, there's a, there's a few different types. There's Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3, or Fast. And some of them get, you know, you can, the newer ones, you can charge within 30 minutes and you get maybe a full charge, but it's a little bit more expensive. But the ones that they're looking for at these multi-unit dwellings are Level 1, so it means you can plug it in at night and you'll generally get a full charge in the morning. Um, and it, it was interesting, when they were giving the, um, the presentation, they had this picture and they're like, "Oh, you're gonna crack up at this picture." And it was a picture of an apartment building and then the row of cars and their carports and then you see this extension cord coming down and running across the driveway into a, and everybody's laughing and it was the attorney for San Mateo, okay, San Mateo, one of the attorneys that, um, in San Mateo County, and she's sitting there, Ma, uh, Maggie. And, um, she's like, "Yeah." So she went through the process by which she had to talk to her landlord and get, you know, she has to unplug her light in her room to plug this in so she can get to her, you know, place of employment in the morning. So, um, you know, we wanna do well, we wanna do good, and so, um, these are the things that we're investing into is Peninsula Clean Energy. And so, socialize this stuff. I'm, I'm telling you all this because it's important and, um, and they're doing good things with, with the money that they make. Um, I, I pointed out some interesting information. So the, the outcome of the pilot is to make sure that we're identifying better technology for these multifamily, uh, buildings and pilot and evaluate technology, too. Uh, there's also a push to get used, uh, electric vehicles into the hands of lower-income families. So we can, and a lot of lower-income families are living in multi-unit dwell, so it's a circle. So, um, you know, I just, I tell you this so we can just be supporters and advocates of this. Um, the other thing, uh, oh, so we also got a presentation, um, by the San Mateo County Energy and Water Strategy. They, um, the last water, the, uh, the last Energy and Water Strategy was, um, was approved by everyone, all the county, uh, cities in 2009, so they're working on an update. Um, and so they're going around to all the stakeholder groups, um, including, um, community, all the community choice aggregators, uh, public works fleets, uh, water agencies, uh, real estate industries, and they're sort of circulating all of this. And, um, the energy goals, they wanna optimize and, um, and reduce, decarbonize, and shift to clean energy, and then looking for similar, uh, goals in terms of water goals, enhance efficiency, expand to alternative sources, uh, of water, and support systemic improvements. So we're gonna see that, um, come back to us and they're gonna be giving us a presentation here. Uh, they are accepting comments through May and if you're interested in making a comment, let me know. Uh, it's, it's only going out to elected officials, city staff, citizen groups, nonprofits, and contractors. So, um, again, that is the, uh, San Mateo County Energy and Water Strategy Goals for 2025. Uh, and then, and then, uh, just wanted to let you know that, um, PCE, or all California residential electric customers are gonna be transitioning to a Time of Use Rate Plan. A lot of people are already on a Time of Use Rate Plan, but by the end of 2021, or s, oh, we are, uh, all PCE customers are scheduled to transition by September 2021. And so what it, what it is, is basically, um, trying to give incentive for using most of your energy outside of the peak hours, right? So you'll pay less for using, for running your dishwasher and your washer and dryer in the middle of the day than you will when everybody's using it, when they get home from work. So, um, that's just something to keep your eye out. Um, at the end of 2021, your, your bill will look a little bit different, but, uh, and you'll, we'll all be more mindful, we'll all be more mindful when we're using our energy. And some of us maybe already are now. And that was really long and I appreciate you entertaining me. Thank you.
Mary Beer.
Okay, so I also attended the, um, Aloney Event at the, um, Pacifica Museum and it was just, it was really inspirational to see, um, a presentation about the Aloney Heritage and to see them carrying on their traditions through food. Um, I think it's really important that we understand that the Aloney people were living here before Portola and his expedition got here. And so as we're moving into the 250th anniversary of the Portola Expedition, it's, it's really important that we honor the Aloney people. Um, and I think we're gonna be doing a really good job of that. I met with the Aloney Portola Heritage Trail Group, the outreach group, and so we're working on some outreach materials, um, and that will be coming up soon so that we can let the whole community know all of the upcoming events that are gonna be focused around the 250th anniversary of the expedition. Um, I met briefly with the, the board from the Peninsula Clean Energy and we just heard Deirdre talk all about that, so that was really good for me. I'm an alternate for that and so I'm learning all about it. Um, I also attended my very first Progress Seminar and it was really exciting to be there and I felt welcomed and, um, people were showing me like where to sit and how to go to all the different rooms and, and the things, I think the biggest takeaway for me was that it's really important for us to look at a regional approach to our government and they talked a lot about that while we were there. And also, um, that city councils all over the region really need to be talking about the right to shelter. And so I'm hoping that we can have more conversations about that as we move forward. Um, the Age Friendly Task Force met and we're looking at projects to work on. Um, we're gonna be looking at, um, creating a three-part Housing Smithsonian, so where people can come, can come together and talk about housing. Um, we're looking at some transportation projects and then an age-friendly business initiative. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Mike?
Um, the table was really crowded at the Aloney Lunch, 'cause I was there, too. And, and the food was really good. We all, um, um, it's all been said. I mean, it was interesting learning about the Native Americans and where there's still some in the East Bay, not so much on this side of the bay. Um, what is interesting is I had somebody do some work at my house, um, a couple weeks ago, and he was, asked me, he says, "Well, you kinda know some things in the city, right?" And I said, "Yeah, I know a couple things." And, and he had been digging in his backyard and he found an old, a real Aloney grinding bowl. And so I told him to go take and go call up the Historical Society, 'cause he'd had it verified by the San Mateo County Historical Society. And he went to the, uh, Pacifica Historical Society and that bowl is now on exhibit and it was just found in somebody's backyard, uh, in Lindemar, right across from, by the creek. So anyhow, I just thought that was interesting, if you dig in your backyard, you might find autochokes and, um, Aloney material. I also attended the Airport Roundtable and, um, still trying to get a handle on that 'cause they use, you know, like 50 acronyms in each meeting, okay? Um, CNEL, DBEL, you know, the FAA and, you know, OAK. Um, it's just really kind of interesting, so that means tomorrow, I'm actually going to Airport 101 to learn the acronyms. Apparently it's two and a half hours sitting in a table, you know, I guess, repeating acronyms. I, I'll have to report out on it next time. Um, but the highlights of the meeting, if you wanna call them that, is we have formed a departure group. Um, there's always been an arrival group, uh, for the, um, Foster City, San Mateo, Belmont area. And then there's a ground-based noise group, which really is primarily San Bruno and Milbrae because of the issues they're having with the planes taking off. And we have now formed a, uh, departure group, which right now is Pacifica, Brisbane, Daly City hasn't given us if they're gonna join, and we're working on trying to get parts of San Francisco on there. So, um, we're gonna be that, and the, the thing that will be good about that is we will actually get some staff time budgeted for departures to start working on that. So that will be good. We also, they are getting some new monitoring stations, which I guess they will be able to track better noise resolutions or noise issues, where, and it will actually tell them which plane and etcetera. And they, um, they are also have, and I forget what they called it, but there's some sort of station that monitors where the planes, where the planes come from, and they're actually gonna start differentiating between Oakland and San Francisco so we can actually track and see how many planes are coming from Oakland. Um, at the Progress Seminar, Jackie Spear announced she is going to be taking and introducing some sort of legislation at the, in Congress about airport noise. Like, we don't know what that will be, uh, but hopefully we can get things moving. I was also at the Progress Seminar and they had, um, four workshops we each attended. Um, and again, just like my, um, comrade said, is regionalism is the big key here because San Francisco's a city and a county, Santa Clara's, all their different cities speak with one voice. So now we passed a, um, resolution last meeting for Pacifica to be part of the San Mateo County Group to try to get some, um, funding for our projects. And in the, the group that we joined is one of, is, and supporting is the Water Group and they went over some of the projects they've already done and it's all been South County. So hopefully we will be part of that and, uh, move forward on that. And direction to City Manager, they said that we should, uh, be getting, or should request, they actually said we should request, a letter supporting AB25, which is gonna facilitate the regionalism of moving forward. And they were hoping that every city in the county would pass that. And there, and if you could get, there's two versions. One is for nonprofits, one is for cities to pass. So we could pass that on to some of the nonprofits in Pacifica and ask them to send that in also. And, um, that was, let's see, there was other, uh, workshops, transportation, housing, about what some cities were doing. Uh, Burlingame is leading the pack in housing production and Redwood City is also by changing some zoning laws and density, etcetera. So it was worth it. The big, the big event in Progress Seminar is networking and getting to know your counterparts and then different people in the county that you can call up and contact later and maybe, "Hey, I'm Mike O'Neil, I met you at da-da-da." So anyhow, that was what I did, so.
Sue Beckmeyer.
The, uh, last couple weeks have had not so many meetings, but, um, I did find the opportunity to go to the Council of Cities Dinner, which was hosted by Brisbane this time. Um, and it was kind of a departure from the standard, uh, dinner, you know, networking time and then sit down and have dinner. Um, this was an interactive evening, so, uh, we played a game and it was called The Racket. And we each had a persona and we had to do a lot of, um, negotiating and working with others to get our needs met and to take care of others. And, um, my particular role, I had no choice in the role, I was a weapons dealer. Um, so I had to learn what that was all about. He was a bartender. So it was a really interesting time and I really, um, commended the Mayor of Brisbane for coming up with something a little bit different. It was a lot of fun. It gave us all a chance to interact with each other in a slightly different way and perhaps a slightly more memorable way. So that was really fun. Um, the very same day, earlier in the day, was the Oceana High School Senior Exhibitions, which I find to be a really amazingly, um, broad-based and, and wonderful opportunity for anyone in our community to help with the, um, community evaluator, being a community evaluator. And I know Louis Sun was, um, from our staff, was signed on to do that and I encourage anyone, pay attention, um, early March is when they have, they schedule a meeting to sign up and it's usually by the end of March is the day, it's on a Friday. And you sit in and evaluate the presentations of seniors that have worked on a project for a year, doing research and, um, a lot of public policy-related things. One of the sessions that I sat in on was rent control policies. It was very, very interesting. So I really highly recommend that experience. Um, I had a, a Beautification Advisory Committee, I'm the liaison for that, and, um, I'm gonna put out again, they're looking for volunteers to participate in the Mayor's Beautification Awards Process. It would be a fun thing to do. Um, there's just one meeting a month and it meets starting in May and it goes until October. And part of what you do is, um, come up with, um, different homes and, and businesses in town that are doing a great job with their landscaping and, um, you would like to consider and put forward for decisions on the Mayor's advisory. So the Mayor can also participate in this, or any Councilmembers who would like to, or any members of the public. So if you're interested in that at all, please contact Patty Huntalas through the Beautification Advisory Committee website on the city's website. Uh, the Progress Seminar was a very exhausting and fantastic event. Um, it It really was a Friday afternoon till Sunday afternoon, and very intensive and busy. What I agree with my fellow council members, it was a great opportunity for networking. And I found that, I've been at this now, what, three months? Three, Mary, what, three, four? We're going on four months, something like that? Five? Wow. And what's great is we're getting to, I certainly can say I'm getting to the point where I'm recognizing people. I'm knowing people. I can come back to them with a continuing conversation on a topic. So as things evolve with the county, when we're hearing about how, some kind of housing policy or funding that may be coming available for a grant, especially if it's something that's regionally, as Mike was saying, regionally based, it gives us a chance to talk about those opportunities amongst ourselves, go back to our own staffs, and keep that fuel going. So the seminar that I found was most helpful for me, I think, was the one about criminal justice reform, because I think it was the most helpful, because it was the one that I thought, when I got the schedule, I went, "I don't think I need to go to this. It doesn't really pertain to Pacifica, per se." But it pertains to everyone. And it was very useful for me to see and hear an update on Prop 47 and Prop 57, and different reforms that we've put in place, the citizens of California have voted over time, and what does that really mean in terms of bringing, reducing prison populations, and shifting inmate populations from state level to the county level? And also, what I found most interesting was the programs for helping people deal with substance abuse issues, with mental health issues, with education issues. I was really encouraged by that. So working as an educator, it really made me happy to see that that was happening. My other takeaway was, I was really encouraged by the fact that I already knew about a lot of stuff that I heard there. And I was very proud of Pacifica being mentioned in the transportation seminar about our micro transit project. And so, of course, I apologize, City Manager Woodhouse. I now would like to get an update on that, because everybody in the county heard about how Pacifica is on point for that project. And I know that we've had a presentation from Sam Trans, but I'd sure like to have an update, if we can get one, on timing. When is it starting? When is it ending? Who's the focus of the, you know, of the pilot? How do they see it rolling out? Because it was really nice to hear Pacifica's name there. The other thing Mike mentioned, too, was the resiliency, which we certainly had just taken up in terms of sea level rise adaptation and those kinds of things. And it's very encouraging to me that we're going to have partnership with others in the county. We won't be just alone trying to go out and get multimillion-dollar grants to work on our issues. So that was long-winded, but thanks.
Okay. I also went to the Oloney Lunch, and the most interesting thing I found was that they told us, they went out the night before and foraged for a lot of the items they served us, mushrooms and nettles and certain things that we ate, they foraged for the night before. And I thought that was something very original. I also went to the Progress Seminar, and I spent a lot of time looking for votes for the Water Agency. So it is good to be able to talk to people who can help you and can further our coastal issues with the resiliency, Sea Level Rise and Resiliency Agency. I'd like to remind everybody about the Home for All event on April 13th. It's an event for the entire public. We would like as many people as possible to come out. We are serving breakfast. It starts at nine o'clock, 9:30, excuse me. It's at the Community Center, and if people could RSVP, that would help, the numbers. Please tell all your friends. It's about listening. It's about the diverse issues behind housing, housing altogether. And if as many people could come out as possible, that would be great. And there is childcare, too. So that's a very important event on April 13th at 9:30 at the Community Center. Thank you, and I'm done. Staff communications?
Quick, Mayor Vardelas, council members Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. One of, I had two main updates, and one was going to be to reiterate the Home for All event on Saturday, so I'll take the opportunity to speak about it more. It's 9:30 to noon, you get a full breakfast slash brunch served. And, you know, all of us, if we're not confronted with housing issues ourselves, we know people in our lives that are confronted with housing issues. So if anyone who's listening to this can be an ambassador to get folks out, if you're not even available to go, to come to the meeting, because the success of the dialogue at the meeting is only going to be as good as is the variety of perspectives that are represented during the conversation. So really encourage folks, this Saturday at the Community Center, 9:30, food is served, 10 o'clock, the program begins. The other item I wanted to announce is that there, many of the council members, or all of them, I believe, mentioned the Oloney meal that was served. And this Sunday, the Doug McConnell Open Roads episode, which is NBC Bay Area, 6:30 PM on Sunday, which I believe is the 14th of April, will air. Half-hour episode featuring information about the Oloney Portola event, and the trail and the discovery site. And it'll feature Pacifica in some form or another. I haven't seen the footage, but I know that they're working hard on it to finalize it. So everyone should look forward to being able to see that. And it will also re-air over time, too, and building up to the November celebration event. So those are the two items that I wanted to mention.
Thank you. Mike wants to say one more thing before we move on.
Yeah, I forgot to mention this, but it was, one of the things that's real nice about city councils, you do develop contacts in the county. And we had a new business that wants to relocate into Pacifica, and they needed to have their electrical service upgraded to, in order to facilitate the business, because the building was old, I guess. So the business contacted Councilman Beckmeyer, and then she forwarded it to me. And it was very nice in that, because of the contacts you make, I contacted the guy at PG&E. And the upgrade work and installation that needed to be done was scheduled for, I think, late May, and it's now moved up to middle of April.
Yeah, I think it was even later than that. They were telling them, like, eight months.
Yeah. So it's nice to find that the contacts and networking you do in the county can really help improve the community and the business climate. So I just wanted to acknowledge PG&E for their many, many sins, but maybe once in a while, they come through, too. So I just wanted to make that, and I welcome the new business. It's going to be up in Pacific manner.
Thank you. We're going to move on to public hearings. Item number six is an introduction of an ordinance to amend existing zoning regulations in order to incorporate amendments to the California law related to accessory dwelling unit construction. And Bonnie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. In October 2017, the City Council adopted an ordinance to amend the Pacifica Municipal Code to be consistent with Section 65852.2 of the California Government Code pertaining to local construction regulations of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as a result of amendments from Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069, which became effective in January 1, 2017. Also, in October 2017, the California Legislature enacted Senate Bill 229 and Assembly Bill 494, which further amended the government code pertaining to the local regulation of ADUs, and became effective January 1, 2018. The proposed amendments included in tonight's staff report are intended to incorporate the changes associated with Senate Bill 229 and Assembly Bill 494, and bring Pacifica's ADU regulation into compliance with state law. These amendments address the following. They allow an ADU to be created on sites that include a proposed detached or detached single-family dwelling. They define the term tandem parking to mean two or more automobiles. They reduce the maximum number of parking spaces, which may be required for an ADU, to one space. They remove off-street parking requirements for studio ADUs and attached ADUs. They require special districts and water corporations to charge a proportional fee scale based on an ADU's size or its number of plumbing fixtures. And they authorize the Department of Housing and Community Development to review and comment on ADU ordinances. The Planning Commission, at their regularly scheduled March 18th meeting, voted five to zero with two absences to recommend the proposed amendments for City Council's approval. Staff recommends that council moves to introduce the ordinance tonight. Additionally, Commissioner Niblin is present tonight as a Planning Commission liaison. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is here to help answer questions. Thanks.
Are there questions from council?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
John, thanks for being here tonight. What were some of the highlights of your discussion? Was there anything that stands out for you?
Well, we had, I think we had, the first thing I'll note is that we got a very, very good and comprehensive report from staff. So I think that a lot of the issues were very well-framed as we went in. Conversation about parking, I think that's something that comes up with regularity when we're looking at things like this. So there was concern in dialogue around parking, and we understood that, you know, much of what was happening in that arena was going to be driven by state law and sort of state law requirements. So the other concern, to the extent that something stands out in my mind, was really around the use of ADUs for short-term rentals. And that was something that, even in the earlier iteration of the ordinance, was not permitted. So that was raised again, and our concerns in that area were addressed. I think that the general tone, if I could, was in support of ADUs as sort of a naturally affordable form of housing that, broadly speaking, I think that, I can say the commission was in favor of, as at least was articulated at the meeting.
Other questions?
Yeah, so you mentioned it's a way for broadly affordable units, right? Is there any way that we can track that?
Well, again, yeah, the term I used was naturally affordable, to distinguish it from kind of legally, sort of legal definition of affordable housing. So that was, that was the, it's kind of probably my term more than anybody else's, so maybe, but in terms of how we could track it, and maybe I could get a little more understanding of...
Well, I think it's also mentioned several times, specifically on page 77, where it talks a lot about the mitigation of and widespread and ongoing shortage of affordable housing, and that we can expand access to affordable housing. So there's several, it references it several times. And so I guess, coming from a housing standpoint, and I don't expect you to have an answer, I guess I just wanted to make sure that at some time, we can maybe think about, you know, are these units really going to be affordable, and what that means for our community specifically?
Right. And yeah, and I would say that I bring a little bit of experience with this in my work with the county. I work in the county council's office, and one of my primary responsibilities is to help coordinate the, at least, legal support for the affordable housing initiatives that the county is working. And yeah, I think that, you know, the assumption that we've made in a lot of contexts is that because, owing to the size, in the first instance, and the particular sort of configuration of these units, they are generally naturally affordable, again, in the sense that, again, they're smaller units that are more efficient to build in some ways. So we haven't really given thought to sort of legal constraints around it, sort of more just in the nature of the kind of housing, it being somewhat more affordable. I don't know if that's completely responsive, but that's...
It is. Thank you.
Mike?
Let's see.
Wrong button.
You can go first.
No, no, go ahead.
Oh, okay. ADU, one of the issues in reading, I know it's very, basically, you don't, parking is really, any restrictive parking regulations are kind of not a factor anymore, right? Pretty much?
In terms of requiring the amount of parking?
Right, right.
Correct.
Okay. Now, in Fairmont, unless I'm mistaken, they used to have some rules in their HOA that said you cannot park on a lawn or pave over lawn to make it. Does this now supersede those HOA laws?
So the city's ordinances are distinct and separate from the HOA rules, and so we do not enforce HOA rules at all. And so I believe even some of the HOA rules may say you can't have ADUs.
Okay. So basically, my question is, HOAs can prohibit certain things, paint colors, parking, maybe ADUs. Does this supersede those HOA rules?
So I can't comment on whether or not the HOA rules are still enforceable, but the city is not involved. We enforce the ordinance, and if the ordinance says this person can build an ADU, we issue a building permit for it.
So city attorney, does that mean the city then can step in against the HOA and enforce this?
No, we generally do not get involved in violations of HOA regulations. We only get involved if a condition in one of the HOA rules or regulations was required to be inserted because we required it as a condition of approval. But if we did not impose it as a condition, which I, we would not have, since this is brand-new, then we do not have any control over regulating or enforcing any HOA rules or regulations.
Okay, so then basically, we can't, we can't really, if the homeowners association chooses to enforce that rule, we can't force them to do ADUs, correct? And that's what I'm hearing you say?
We cannot.
Okay. Have we notified or been in touch with the North Coast County Water District? Because I know the connection fees are supposed to be substantially less for ADUs than, like a brand-new house?
Yeah, I informed them of the amendments that we were going to incorporate. I emailed the general manager with the staff report and highlighted the amendment that was made. This amendment is to keep consistency with state law, so this already applies to them. We're just making the text amendment to make our language consistent.
Okay. One issue I know we've had in terms of Cattle Hill and GGNR, you know, transfer, is lot lines, that a lot of the homeowners that are on, next to the lot lines for GGNR have encroached on that property. So are we taking and checking to be sure, or what kind of inspections are we having on an ADU that they won't encroach on Cattle Hill and GGNR to maybe, you get what I'm saying, you say? Lot lines?
Sure, that would come to light in the building plan check process. So we would see a site plan, perhaps, that shows a lot that's 150 feet deep, but we always look at the assessor map, and we notice it's only 100 feet deep. And so we would stop and say, you know, this needs to be rectified. And usually, that's when those types of, you know, encroachments come to light, and we would not issue a building permit in that instance if it's encroaching on others' property.
Okay, good. That was my concern. In regards, I didn't notice, and I mean, it was quite, it was a good staff report, but it was quite volum, volum big.
Humans.
Yeah. Okay. How, I didn't see any sort of limit as to size. Can it only be a studio? Can it be one bedroom? Maybe one bedroom with a nursery off to the side or something?
There's no limitation in the number of rooms that you can have in an ADU. There's three types of ADUs. There's ADUs that convert existing floor area into an ADU. There's an attached ADU where you're adding new floor area that's attached to a primary dwelling unit or an accessory structure, like a detached garage. And then there's a detached ADU where you're just maybe building a separate structure in your backyard. They all have their own standards in terms of maximum size, but there's no bedroom max in terms of that.
Okay. And are we waiving any sort of floor-area ratios for lot line, for the lots? Because like, I know, my days in the Planning Commission, there was, we'd have plot or lot, and there was a floor... lot, and there was a floor area ratio that no more than this could be built. Are those now waived for an ADU? And could you actually put in if two ADUs, and is there a maximum of, you follow what I mean, is how many ADUs could someone put on one piece of property?
So, you can only have two units max. There's the main unit and one ADU.
Okay.
And then, we use maximum lot coverage. And so, rather than floor area ratio, and so, the maximum lot coverage applicable to the underlying zoning district still applies.
Okay, so, most of the, now, this, this is just kind of off the top of the head question, but like, you have a 5,000 square foot lot in Lindemar. The typical Lindemar rancher's 1,000, so that's roughly 20% lot coverage, floor area ratio, right?
1440 for your garage.
1440, okay. Can they put in an ADU?
Yeah, so, yeah, a lot being...
But not in the garage, but in a separate unit?
Standard lot is 5,000 square feet. And a typical rancher with, if you include the garage, it's probably closer something to maybe 1,500 square feet. So, 40% of a 5,000 square foot lot is 2,000. So, you would have that remaining balance with 500 square feet to build a detached ADU if you're able to meet the setbacks or an attached, or you could convert portion of your home as well.
Okay, so that was going to be my next question. Setbacks are waived, or you still have to have this five-foot setback from lot lines and stuff like that?
Similar to the maximum size requirements, the setback requirements differ depending on what type of ADU you're looking to create. So, they do have setbacks. There's also a standard for distances between structures. And I believe at least the setbacks are intended to at least maintain fire break safety standards. I don't recall offhand what the intention of the 10-foot structure distance is, but that's there as well.
And nobody could put an ADU in front of the house, right?
Yes.
They can?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Thanks.
If you have the proper setbacks.
Yeah.
Sue?
I had a question, and I apologize if it's addressed here and I didn't find it. I was trying to locate any sort of notice requirements for ADUs that might be different from any kind of notice requirements for construction in a neighborhood. Is there something different with ADUs? And can you speak to what that looks, what that would look like under this for Pacifica?
There's no notice requirement.
Okay. So, you can, so a property owner could start building an ADU or converting existing space for an ADU and they don't have to notify neighborhood folks?
That's correct.
I mean, they might go, hey, what's going on?
Right.
And come down to your office. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions too, from the original ordinance. Setbacks, because there are a lot of garages that have zero lot line, they're set right in the corner. So, would that prohibit you from building an ADU above a garage if it had, if it was existing with a zero lot line?
So, conversion within an existing structure, even if it's a, if it's a detached accessory structure, is one area of the law that we're required to allow that conversion to occur where the building sits. So, that can happen. Bonnie's going to help me look up about, you know, an addition on the, on top. But if, let's just say they were converting the garage. But we did build in standards in the, in the ordinance so that you, the builder would be required to put in all of the windows on other part, on other sides of the structure so they're not right on their property line and perhaps, you know, having some privacy issues for the neighbors.
Yeah, so, a setback for an attached ADU to a, for example, a detached garage would have to maintain some setbacks. So, the side setback would be five feet. And if it was a street side, side setback, then it would be 20 feet. So, there are some standards for setbacks.
So, if you were to build on top of a garage that was already at a zero lot line, you would have to bring your second unit in by five feet?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay. Also, we had a complaint in the very beginning about a person, about the owner occupancy. And I know that that's still a requirement, that one of the units must be owner occupied?
Mm-hmm.
That's...
Yes.
The minimum, is our minimum, used to be 450? It says minimum, at least, an efficiency unit to be constructed in compliance with local development standards. Is that still 450 minimum?
So, an efficiency unit is 150 square feet.
Oh, okay.
And it's, it's, there's specific design criteria in the Health and Safety Code for efficiency units. And they are only designed for a maximum occupancy of two individuals. And so, this is different from a standalone structure that maybe somebody wants to build a very small standalone house. That's when the 450 criteria would come in.
Okay. And I know it was explained at your meeting about what an efficiency unit is. My, this is my last question. The street width, did they take into consideration one-way streets, which are much narrower than the other streets? And also, Mike was talking about encroachment, but Rockaway Beach, for example, is really a much wider street than it appears. But the people have all encroached upon the street and it's gotten way more narrow. And would that fit within, it's supposed to be wider than 26 feet, and it may not be?
Yeah, I can, our, our code as it's written now doesn't take into account one-way streets. That's been a question that's come up in the past. So, there's no language in the code that, that makes any accommodations for that. In terms of the, the actual right-of-way being wider than the developed street, we've been asking people to provide the measurements of the actual developed street of where vehicles can, can drive along. So, if the, if the right-of-way is 40 feet, but you only have 30 of it developed, then that's what we, that's the measurement that we would ask for them to...
Well, then that would pass though, because it's 26 feet width. But, and seems unfair to people who want to do it when other people have encroached upon their street, but...
So, if, I wanted to add on to that. So, the, the reason why one-way streets, I think, wasn't addressed is the focus was on the, the space that an emergency vehicle would need to get through. So, I don't know that, whether or not it was one-way or two-way was necessarily discussed in that conversation. And so, 26 feet is what you would need to get a fire truck through, plus one row of parking on one, on one side of the street. So, and then Bonnie is correct that you may have a much wider right-of-way, but the developed section is what we're looking at and that you have at least 26 feet. If somebody is doing substantial improvement to their home, sometimes they will do some street frontage improvements and put in sidewalk. And if they improve that section, even if it's just in front of their, their lot, to 26 or more, they're meeting the requirement.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have another question?
Our height limit's 35, is that still applicable?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Now, we'll, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this topic? I have no yellow cards. Seeing none, we'll come back to council.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Move to introduce, waive the first reading and read by title only the ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica Amending Article 4 R1 Single Family Residential District Article 4.5 Accessory Dwelling Units Article 5 R2 Two-Family Residential District and Article 6 R3 Multiple Family Residential District of Chapter 4 Title Line of the Pacifica Municipal Code to Incorporate California Updated Related to Accessory Dwelling Unit Construction TA-115-19 and Finding Adoption of the Ordinance Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote. That passes five to zero, and we have no other items. So, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Eight o'clock. That's a record.
Wow, I know. I was rushing.
Just wants to go.
Thank you for coming.
Never.
Eight o'clock.